I would like to call to order the Monday, November 19th meeting of the Monona City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Kitzler.
Here.
Alder Core.
Here.
Alder Groupie.
Here.
Alder Moore.
Here.
Alder Spate.
Here.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 24th and October 29th meetings?
Move to approve?
Second.
Any comments or corrections? Joan, I had two things on page four.
Of which?
Of the first, the 24th.
Uh huh.
It's actually page two of the minutes. In the second paragraph, it said that I reported they get Wisconsin Library Association tech support. It's actually South Central Library System tech support.
Okay.
It's about two-thirds of the way down in the second paragraph on page two of the minutes of the 24th.
On page two of the minutes?
Yep. It's page four of the packet.
Second paragraph.
Okay. Well, let me, let me just write it down.
Okay.
So it's the tech support is from?
South Central Library.
South Central Library.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, okay, on page 10 of the packet, which is the page four of the October 29th minutes.
Okay.
Towards the end where we're talking about, right before it says, right before adjournment, it says Finance Director Potaker. In the paragraph right before that, we're talking about transit, keeping the transit service. And you said the previous two mayors wanted to end or increase this program. Did you mean end or decrease?
Decrease.
One of them wanted to end it and one of them wanted to?
Decrease.
Decrease it?
Yeah, Bob.
You said?
I said decrease.
All right.
Okay.
We'll put, we'll change.
Go back to the record.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had. Anyone else? All in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Minutes are approved. We have several appearances tonight. Again, if you have filled out a form, would you please turn it in to Alder Groupie and she will pass it down to me. We are limiting this to three minutes apiece. First up is Mark Buffett, who would like to speak in favor of the sustainability budget. Yeah, if you'd like to come up here, Mark.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Mark Buffett. I'm on the Sustainability Committee, also a resident here in Monona for the last 18 years. There's that bumper sticker saying that we've seen over and over for years, right? Think globally, act locally. I think it's more important than ever now that we act locally when it comes to climate change.
I'm sorry. Okay.
There is a, there's a movement, there's a green wave that's happening here in Dane County at the local level, at citizens, understanding the importance of climate change and that it's real and that it's happening. And this green wave is happening across the country, it's across the world. You look at organizations like 350.org and others like that that are promoting renewable energy initiatives and educating people. I guess I'm in favor of this, this little bit of a change to the Sustainability Committee's budget, knowing that we can have a huge impact on what we do here in Monona as far as engaging and educating the citizens, my neighbors, the community, business owners, business leaders, nonprofits, and elected officials on the importance of getting off of coal and fossil fuels and moving our policies and moving our energy making and our energy usage in renewable energy resources. So I'm just encouraging you to give us that little bit more. We've got an energized committee that is ready to get going and engaging our community and our citizens. So help us, help Monona join that green wave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I misspoke. We have no appearances. These are all related, this is all the public hearing portion. These are all related to receiving public input regarding the proposed 2019 operating budget. So next up is Teresa Radamacher, who would like to speak in favor of the Sustainability Committee Budget Amendment.
So I'm Teresa Radamacher. I live at 5201 McKenna Road, just a couple blocks that way. And just in case you're not up to speed, just for those who may not know this, so the Sustainability Committee has been around for a few years. And one of our first charges was to come up with a sustainability plan. And we worked for a couple of years just to figure out what that might look like. And we finally got it. And it was beautiful. And we were so proud of ourselves. And then there's the implementation phase. And we all sort of said, wow, this is the hard part, right? What would that even look like? How do we even make these massive, bold, and courageous, these changes that take a lot of courage? And so we realized that we're not experts. We realized that we're people who care and we're going to show up and dedicate our time and make things happen, but we are not the ones that hold the expertise. We decided to embark on a number of little projects. The LEAF management project was a start. Then we decided that we needed to get a little more serious and tackle energy consumption, energy use, energy efficiency, renewable energy, reducing our carbon footprint. That's really where it matters. And so we needed to educate ourselves about that. We needed to bring in people from the outside. We learned some amazing things. It's been very fun just to learn about all the options that are in front of us. But moving forward, we need to seek the guidance of experts. And that costs a bit of money. You wouldn't want us to pretend that we're the experts. We certainly don't. And we need to enlist that outside help. The amendment that we're asking for is tiny, that the amount of money that's, that's a change in last year's dollar amount, $400, $400 net difference or total difference, the delta in that amount. And I just want you to think about some of the things that might come with this expertise, right? Some of the things that we've been learning about are solar farms. And there's a concept called a group buy, where people can buy in bulk so the community can have solar on their roofs at a reduced price. It's always more affordable to buy in bulk. Think about perhaps a solar co-op. Imagine an array of solar panels and each one of us puts out $250 and we get between a four and a six percent return on our investment year after year. And we help our own community reduce its energy consumption. And as we're driving by, we look up and we say, I own some of that. I'm part of this community. We're working together to do the right thing as a community. So I just want you to think about what this could mean and ask, we ask for your support in helping us to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dan Costello, who would like to speak in favor of the sustainability budget.
Just here again, part of the Sustainability Committee.
If you could state your name and address, please.
Dan Costello, 5705 Coke Circle, relatively new to the Monona community, but been in the Madison area for a number of years. And sustainability is something that clearly Monona has taken a step to support by having the committee even formed and focused on doing things that are sustainable from practices and moving things ahead, point of view. And what we're asking for within the budget is relatively modest, but there's really two essential and important components as to why we really encourage the approval of these items. One of them is related to community outreach, really surveying the community. And a lot of what we've heard from other communities is the importance of really having that connection with the community about the importance and the awareness of sustainability that's going on. And it's a relatively small amount of funds that we wanted earmarked toward this because we believe that even though we know it's the right thing to do, we want to make sure that we're well aligned with what's going on within the community and that the survey is really a critical component to that. We had folks from the city of Pittsburgh speak to the importance and the impact of having a survey component as part of what they're doing. And it's something that we recommend moving ahead with as well. And to Teresa's point, we are not experts, but we definitely want to solicit the support of experts to shape the recommendations that we're making. And in order to drive things ahead in a more significant way, it's going to take spending some additional funds in order to get that help so that we can be on the path faster to making a difference. I think we have no, no doubts, especially after filling a number of sandbags this last year and going out there and seeing the impact of climate change, that there is a call to action that we all are experiencing, that we need to do something. And we know that it's going to take time and having the right support and having the right community outreach are critical things. And for the modest change in budget year over year, we really ask that significant thought be put into that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. I'm just going to group these all together. Jillian Fink of 6307 Westgate Road would like to register in favor of the sustainability amendments. Sarah Smith would like to speak in favor.
Hi. So I'm Sarah Smith at 5502 Monona Pass, just also a few blocks over there. So I've been a member of the Monona community for two years, and I just joined the Sustainability Committee earlier this year. And part of the reason that I wanted to join the Sustainability Committee in particular is because I read the roadmap that was created in 2015 with input from community members, city council members, business leaders in the community. And I was really excited about it. It was really cool to read through all of the goals that Monona had come up with for its future. And I've been excited to see in the last, I guess, 11 months almost that I've been on the committee, to see all the work that that committee has already put into meeting all of the goals that the community has laid out for it. And I think that the budget that has been put forth here with the, again, as everyone said, really marginal increase in funding would be critical to reaching those goals that our community has agreed upon. So I don't want to go into too much details. We've heard from many of my fellow committee members already of what those details are, but I just want to reiterate that the committee, or the community of Monona has already put forth these goals that they want to reach. And we have a chance to make strides toward that with this new budget. So I would urge you to vote in support of those changes in the budget that, again, are very small, but would make a really big impact on reaching our sustainable goals. So, thank you.
Robin Berg of 6308 Sylvan Lane would like to register in favor of the amendment to the budget regarding the police. Lisa Gunlock of 404 Midland Lane would like to register in favor of the additional police officer and of the Sustainability Committee Budget Amendment. And Corinne Fallett of 6303 Sylvan Lane would like to register in favor of the additional officer and the sustainability budget increase. Would anyone else like to speak or register? Okay, thank you. I'll declare the public hearing section closed. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. The next item, item G1A under unfinished business, the first item is a move to close session to discuss two things, performance evaluations and salary adjustments, and a discussion of the city administrator candidates in terms of employment agreement. I, what I'd like to do, does anyone think we need to go into closed session to discuss the salary adjustments? Than the amendments that are proposed? No, because what I'd like to do then is move the closed session for the discussion of the administrator candidates till the end, so everyone doesn't have to sit here waiting for us to do that. So if that's okay?
Sounds good.
With all of you? Okay, so next up is item G1C, consideration of resolution 18-11-2307, adopting the 2019 operating budget and establishing a tax levy, put forth by myself. Is there, do we need a motion to approve that now, Joan, or later?
Motion now and then after it's all amended.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. I think before we get into the discussion of the actual amendments, Doug had asked Mark and Leah to prepare this report, which you all have, about regarding how many positions have been added to the budget within the last, since 2006, I guess. Doug, if you'd like to address that?
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of put it in context. And really, the main, there's a lot of numbers on the spreadsheet, but the most important ones are just in the lower right-hand corner with the total positions added from 2006 to 2018 of 13.59. Then there were just under five positions added between '06 and '13. And then 8.67 added from '13 to '18 with another 3.2 proposed this year. So that would be bringing that total, the initial total up to 16.79, most of which has happened since 2013, about three-fourths of which I think has happened since then.
Okay. And I think we also, because I know we have several new members, I think we've been in an unusual situation for the last couple of years where we've had additional money that we could put towards additional positions, particularly this year. But we don't, we're kind of at an end of that additional money now, beginning next year. So Mark, would you like to address, I think you had figured it, you had looked at some numbers for next year, hadn't you?
Yeah. So as we kind of talked about already, we're using some of that fund balance this year to go with what we're projecting with the TIF closing. So next year, the new construction number, if it keeps the way it is, it's going to be probably roughly around 150-some thousand. We will go down roughly 60,000 for sure in the transportation aid. It brings it down to like 90,000. So if you add, there was a question asked me if you add the officer, and that's about 92,000. So that basically would use up what we projected for next year's levy already starting there. So that'd basically bring it down to zero, give or take, a little bit. I mean, things will change a little bit next year, but that's a decent estimate for now.
So you think overall, we may have about 150,000 in additional levy?
Right. On top of the TIF closing, which we use a lot of that this year.
Yeah, okay. All right. I just wanted, does anybody have any questions? Or I thought it was useful to look at the numbers. Thank you, Doug, for asking for that. Okay, we will proceed to operating budget amendment number one. On that 19-01, description to increase library tech services position by $2,000. The total amendment with benefits is $2,284. The funding source is fund balance. Alder Spate, did you want to say anything more about this?
I just wanted to remind everyone again that the individual that this will impact is the only other person on the staff other than our director, who has a master's in library science. And this certainly helps to rectify that imbalance in his salary.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, yeah. So this is, we're using fund balance to pay for it this year, correct? So that would, that, which is, that amount would come off of the 150 you were talking about for next year?
Correct.
Come out, I mean, we're going to have to fund it next, I mean, not next, the next budget, 2020 budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spate.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Kitzler.
Aye.
Alder Core.
Aye.
Alder Groupie.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Motion passes. Operating budget 19-02, to move 200, or, I'm sorry, to move $636 on sustainability budget from green tier fees to additional intern allowance. No effect to the levy since it's an allocation within a fund. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Alder Spate, did you have anything else to say about this?
No.
Do we need a roll call for this, since it's just moving two different lines, Joan?
I would not think so. It's not increasing the budget.
Okay.
We don't need roll calls for amendments.
Joan said we need them for anything over 500.
Yep. I asked the city attorney whether we did for any amendments and was told if they increased the budget by $500 or more, we should have a roll call.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Amendment 19-03, to add $500 for a community survey for the 100% renewable energy pledge, use excess 2018 sustainability funding fund balance. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Alder Spate and Moore, do you have anything to say?
No, I just want to thank members of the Sustainability Committee and community for coming out. And I would just say again, you know, as this body certainly knows, community engagement is a very, very important thing. And this will be a multimodal effort to engage the community around renewable energy initiatives in particular and sustainably, generally.
Okay. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Alder Spate.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Kitzler.
Aye.
Alder Core.
Aye.
Alder Groupie.
Aye.
Motion passes. Operating budget 19-04, to add $4,000 from the fund balance for solar energy and finance services to be added to the sustainability budget sponsored by Alder Moore.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
I have a question.
Alder Wood?
Alder Moore, I guess, could you describe a little more what this is for?
Yes. So we're anticipating that approximately 2,000 will be used to contract with outside financial expertise to launch a community group buy, such as Matty Sun. There's a nonprofit organization known as Renew Wisconsin who launched the program in Madison. And they gave us a preliminary estimate of $2,000 to essentially launch and manage the whole program so that it doesn't tax Brad or other city staff and helps get the word out and helps that group buy. The other $2,000, we're still debating in committee exactly which direction we're going to go with it, but, but it's likely that that will be another effort related to community solar buying and/or negotiating with MG&E, MOU, around our intent for solar and our investment, community investment in solar. And so in both cases, it's money to hire the outside expertise that have negotiated with the utility companies as well as with, within communities, time over time, and have real expertise in the area to be able to smartly get some things done.
Okay. And these would be one-time expenses?
Yes.
And we would anticipate bringing these before the council for approval, but this is simply an effort to anticipate having a budget, like everything else we do.
Anyone else? And I just want to point out to the Sustainability Committee that I think we're all in favor of sustainability efforts. And one of my concerns with this is that it was not, when it was first brought to us, it had not been vetted by the committee at all. Typically, when we get budget proposals, they've been vetted by the committee and approved. And I see them when I get the proposed budget in September. And when this amendment was given to us a couple of weeks ago, I didn't, we didn't know anything about it. It just said to include it, to add money for these two particular things, but we didn't know what they were or anything. And I understand that now the, since then, the Sustainability Committee has looked at it.
The committee has approved it.
But I would just, hopefully next year, you know, things happen a little more in the normal process and we get to discuss it as part of the initial operating budget considerations. So, anyone else? All in favor, say aye. Or I'm sorry, we need a roll call.
Alder Groupie.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Alder Spate.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Kitzler.
Aye.
Alder Core.
Aye.
Alder Groupie.
Aye.
Motion passes. If you have your computer, what you have on your packet is correct.
Except there's one additional.
Right.
Right, that's true. There's this last one, which we'll talk about in a minute, is not on the, was not in the packet because it was just turned in recently. Amendment 19-05 would dedicate 23, take $20,000 out of the fund balance to increase the number of IT hours contracted by the city, which would be an extra half day per week. Then we have, and that's submitted by Alder's Moore and Core. Then in your packet, the very last amendment, 19-13, would take 10,000 out of the fund balance to increase the number of IT hours contracted by the city. That's put forth by Alder Wood. Now Alder Wood, you're thinking of this in terms of substitute for the 20,000, or are you thinking of an additional 10,000?
No, as a substitute. So if the first one passes, then we wouldn't take up mine because if the, it's basically as an alternative to this one, to do 10,000 instead of 20. And I guess my concern with taking it out of fund balance, I think it's highly likely to become an ongoing expense. You know, if we increase the tech support in 2019, we'll probably be, we will probably maintain that going forward, and so then it will have to come out of the levy.
Out of the 100,000 we talked about.
Right. And that's why I would just feel more comfortable not taking quite so much, so.
So first of all, we'll consider 1905, which is the $20,000 item, and I guess just vote however you feel, but keep the 19-13 in mind if you'd rather support that. Then you would vote against this.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification? So we said that this would add an additional day to the?
Half a day.
Half a day. So what would the other breakdown of time look like for the $10,000 amendment?
Two and a half hours a week, would you say?
Two hours a week.
Yeah, yeah, about.
Okay.
Or it might make more sense to look at it on an annual basis or monthly. You know, I mean, right now, we're getting, what do, we get three days for the 60,000?
It was a day and a half. It's a day and a half.
A day and a half for 60, right, yeah. So.
So the first amendment would bring it up to two days a week? The second would bring it to like a day and?
Three quarters.
Three quarters. Leah, maybe you could, could you come up to the front, I guess? Sorry. And I guess I should, first of all, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion.
And was there a second?
A second.
Okay.
When was the second, I'm sorry?
I was the second.
Is, I just have a question. Do we always use the same number of hours per week? Or some weeks, they're here more and other weeks less?
Absolutely. Some weeks they're here more. It depends on how many issues we have and emergencies we have. They're always here one day a week, but then beyond that, they could be here one day, one week, and then the next week, they could be here three days if we have issues.
So it really wouldn't be a matter of adding a full second day a week? It would be more what you need. Alder Kitzler.
Would adding a half day per week really take a lot of work off of yours? And I know Sarah's time, because I know you two are the other two IT people. I mean, would this take a lot off? Has there been talk about how this shift would happen, you know, with the extra half day or?
In my opinion, Alder Kitzler, is that there's always a lot of IT work to do. So I think it would just be? it would just be, the consultant would have more time to just do all of the work that needs to be done, because there's always way more work than there is time for them to get it done.
And right now, it just waits until the next time they're in the office?
Yep, yep.
Alder Moore?
So I would just say that while I appreciate Alder Wood's comment around the fact that it's likely to be a recurring expense, I would certainly advocate that, as we discussed originally, when we first started talking about the budget at committee of the whole, I would advocate that the new city administrator and Leah and Sarah and the other people that are involved with IT, including our current IT contractor, spend some time this next year really looking at whether or not that's the wisest use of resources, because our sense is that, you know, some of the problems absolutely need a high-powered contracted IT administrators, and other issues are, you know, gee, you need to reboot your computer. And, and it's quite possible, in fact, that we could get more bang for our buck, potentially by having someone in-house and then contracting out for the emergency calls, as opposed to using somebody that is at a very high level in terms of their IT skill on, for sort of ongoing issues, and so I think that that's something that could readily be investigated in the next year, and hopefully we would be able to get more effective and more efficient in our use of the IT, once we've taken a look at our needs there in a more holistic way.
Anyone else? Alder Coor?
Well, I'd just like to point out that this is coming out of fund balance, so whether we choose to spend ten thousand now or we spend twenty thousand now, it's not going to impact the levy, and the argument that if we do this now, that we'll have to do this next year, we do a new budget every year, and we make choices every year, and that comes out of, you know, this would probably be a part of the administrative budget, so we can make choices at that point whether we add that time or not next year, so I guess I'd just like to see us move forward with the twenty thousand in hopes that we don't need to spend all of it, or if we do, we do, and then we can make the choice in twenty whether we continue that service or not.
Alder Kitzler, did you?
No.
Anyone else? Alder Spade?
I just want to reiterate the point that Alder Moore made, which is that I think the city could look at potentially hiring someone to have this as their primary role, and I don't think that it will exceed the current allowance that we have in our budget if we end up with eighty thousand dollars for this. I think that we would certainly be able to hire someone and pay their benefits around that amount of money. And given that, given that we might have, be able to have forty hours of IT support instead of what we're talking about, which is sixteen, I think that would be a far more prudent way to do this, but I think what this does is this helps to allocate the resources, and we're not just talking about, you know, the impact this has on our administrative staff. I mean, I've heard from the police department, I believe it's Lieutenant Duman, that, you know, spends a lot of time dealing with IT there, and if we have someone on the staff that can, you know, that is someone that we can train and trust, but who has this type of expertise, I think the city would be well served.
Anyone else? Alder Kitzler?
I'd just say, you know, with all these comments, you know, I'm supportive of this, but next year, hopefully there's a plan, I know everybody's talking about that, but, you know, in order to consider this next year, hopefully there's kind of a concrete plan and steps to move forward.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favors, or I'm sorry, Joan, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Alder Coor?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Amendment passes. Amendment nineteen dash oh six, to propose starting the new police officer on March first twenty eighteen, sponsored by Alder's Coor and Kitzler. Is there a motion?
To moved.
Sorry.
Would you two like to say anything about this?
So initially, I had put in for a second officer to start in November, and there was not the support to move forward with that amendment, so I pulled that amendment and instead have chosen, because we are starting this officer, the best case scenario, we start the officer March first, which allows us some salary savings of fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars, and so we are adjusting the budget to reflect that change.
Any questions? Alder Groupie?
I think we just need to clarify that it's March first twenty nineteen.
Yeah, it says twenty eighteen on the, yeah.
Anyone else? All in favors, or Joan, we don't need to vote, roll call on this, is that because it's savings, is that correct?
Does this reduce the budget?
Yeah. Still need a roll call? It reduces the budget?
It's not an expenditure of five million.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item nineteen, amendment nineteen dash oh seven, to add two hundred dollars for dispatch uniform allowance, using the savings from amendment nineteen dash oh six, sponsored by Alder Coor. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alder Coor?
So this is utilizing some of that fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars from the previous amendment to cover the additional two hundred dollars for dispatch uniform for the new dispatcher that was hired this year, that wasn't included in the twenty nineteen budget. Initially, this was included as part of fund balance, but with the savings, we've switched it over to the salary savings.
Any questions? Alder Kitzler?
Well, this is a minor adjustment, and it's probably not necessarily, you know, popular belief, the, I just have a problem with uniform allowance for, and I understand the need for, you know, a polo that makes you feel a part of a community, or, you know, those types of uniforms, if you will, but I know there's a number of other departments similar that have those wants, those needs, and they don't always have that in their budget, and they definitely don't have two hundred dollars per person. So I just, again, I know it's not necessarily a popular, I know it's only two hundred dollars, but it's something that I've been thinking about and just wanted to put out there as a comment.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, or, no.
Motion passes. Amendment nineteen dash oh eight, to increase police overtime by two thousand dollars, police fueled by a thousand dollars in police uniform allowance for the new officer using the savings from nineteen oh six. Oh, I'm sorry, the police uniform is six hundred dollars, so the total amount would be three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
And actually, it's only thirty-eight hundred, I had sent an update to Mark.
That's one I forgot, it was thirty-eight hundred, thirty-six hundred.
Okay.
What's the value on there?
Thirty-six hundred.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Alder Wood?
So the money for the uniform allowance wasn't already in the, the operating budget for the new position?
No.
And the FICA and WRS wasn't in there?
The FICA and the WRS is a part, is a part of that increase in the overtime.
Overtime, right.
Yes, it was a miscommunication with the city administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, Joan, please call the roll.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Coor?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Motion passes. Amendment nineteen dash oh nine, to increase recycle cart revenue by a thousand dollars as it should have been included in the original budget, and increase interest income by two thousand dollars based on updated projections from the finance director. This is put forth by Alder Kitzler. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Alder Kitzler?
Yeah, so talking with the finance director when looking for variety of cuts or revenue additions, he recommended these two areas.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I assume since this is revenue, we don't have to have a roll call. Amendment nineteen dash ten, to add eighty-six hundred dollars for two weeks paid family care and add thirty thousand dollars from the fund balance to increase the initial paid leave fund balance. The increase to the property tax is offset by the savings amendment nineteen dash oh six. Is there a motion to, and this is put forth by Alder Kitzler. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Alder Kitzler?
So in our original budget, we have paid parental leave for two weeks for city employees, which was about thirty-six hundred dollars, in discussion or hearing the discussion from the council at the time, and then just my personal belief of making it equitable with people with family and without family, and by family, I mean kids or non-kids, but then also looking at the city as a whole, we have a number of staff that are able to take advantage of this, whereas they're not necessarily able to take advantage of the paid parental leave. So this amendment is increasing it by eighty-six hundred dollars, which gets us twelve thousand dollars, the actual estimate, the cost would be eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-four, I just rounded up for the amendment purposes. And then in conjunction, increasing the fund balance, so we originally had a fund balance of thirty thousand, I want to increase that fund balance using the fund balance of the city by another thirty thousand, so it would be a sixty thousand total fund balance. And what that fund balance does is that it would pay towards overtime or different employees' expenses as a part of this plan. The annual amount that you would see, so that twelve thousand per year would pay into this fund balance, and that's because some years it might be higher, some years it might be lower, and then for all those who weren't here, what I did was I looked at all FMLA from employees for the last ten years, and then we averaged them out, figured out which ones were paid parental leave, which ones were paid family leave, and that's how we had these two different numbers, and that's why it's a much larger increase for the paid family leave, or paid family care, I should say, because across the city, a lot more people take advantage of that part of FMLA, not necessarily having a baby or fostering or different things. So that's why it's a larger increase, it's not just double what you see in the budget. This is also a bit of an increase factoring in time and half for, for our public safety employees as well. So I think that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it. I know there's some concern around policies, and I think, you know, as Alder Moore likes to say, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel, I don't think we're inventing the wheel, there's a number of municipalities that are out there that are already doing this, and I think that's one way we can add a benefit to our city employees and show that, you know, this is a great place to not only live and play, but also to work. And then, you know, just more on my soapbox of, you know, budgets are the priorities we set, budgets also reflect the values that we have as a council, I think, similar to the sustainability initiatives that we have. Manona can really lead by example in a number of areas, and I don't necessarily think we're leading in this area, but I do think we could be one of a handful of communities in the Dane County area that would implement such a thing, so, you know, I'm fully behind this, I hope the council's behind this, I understand there's some concerns, but obviously, this wouldn't be implemented until a policy is passed by the council, and that goes for both of them, if we pass the budget with the paid parental leave as well. So this is, you know, something that we'd have to work through, we'd work with our attorney and different things like that, but all in all, I don't think not having a policy set in place today should be a hindrance to pass this now for the future.
Any comments, questions? Alder Spade and then Alder Groupie?
Alder Kitzler, I just want to commend you and thank you for your persistence on this issue. I could not agree any more strongly, and I'm happy that, I hope that we pass this and can champion this.
Alder Groupie?
I agree, I think we talk a lot often about wanting to do something right the first time versus putting something sort of temporary into place and then elaborating on it or expanding it in the future. For me personally, I think this is a value that I share, I think equality, equity across departments, people in our community is very important, and I am just very appreciative of the extra work to go into this to ensure that it's not just for parental leave, but includes paid family leave as well.
Anyone else? Alder Wood?
So, yeah, I appreciate the effort and support the concept, but we don't have a policy, and I think we need to have a policy, nobody's going to be able to use this money or take this leave, right, until we have a policy. That could be run through the finance personnel committee and, and we could adopt a policy and the budget could be amended. The other question I have is, this transfer is an additional thirty thousand from the general fund? Do you expect that would be an ongoing expense every year?
No, I don't, I mean, so the, the hope of, hopefully all the math that I've done correctly and passed it by the finance director is that the yearly contribution of the twelve thousand, which again would be a part of the levy, the twelve thousand-
Right.
-would continually add into that fund balance, and that, again, some years we might use two thousand, three thousand, some years we might use twenty thousand, or, you know, on the, I think the highest year that I had calculated was thirty-six thousand. So this fund balance is merely just kind of a cushion so that we have a fund that we can track that would fluctuate as it's needed each year. So the twelve thousand is what's annual, I'm hopeful that the fund balance, that starting at the sixty thousand would be all that we'd have to take out of the fund balance in the future. Does that make sense?
I think so. So basically, this, the thirty thousand is in case it's a high year, the money would be there in nineteen.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, and there's two trains of thought, one is, well,
we have the city fund balance, so we could always just use that and pull from that, but talking to the finance director, we really wanted to create a separate fund so that it's easily tracked. And we can look at it year to year.
So I get, well, I may.
Go ahead.
So then, either way, we would be, if this passes, we'll still need to, at finance and personnel, develop a policy to implement.
Yep, same with the paid parental leave, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else? Alder Moore?
Yeah, I would just, I want to reiterate what I said at the first read, which is, I think it really is important if we're going to move forward, that we move forward with, with any kind of family leave, which is to say, I think it's highly significant and important that we support people that, that need that leave, whether it's for parents or for babies or for siblings or, and as Alder Kitzler just pointed out, I'm very confident that we don't have to reinvent the wheel here, that there are other policies that we can lean on other municipalities, and would urge the support of this.
Anyone else? And again, I would just remind everyone that everybody does get sick leave to cover this type of thing already, so I know this is, would be in addition to that. So all in favor are, I guess Joan, would you please call the roll?
I have to write your notes, hold on. Thank you. Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Coor?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Motion passes. Amendment nineteen dash eleven, to increase street foreman's salary by three thousand dollars to put in line with other comparable positions, salary split between the stormwater and sewer utility funds. This is sponsored by Alder's Kitzler and Wood.
Move to approve. Second.
In talking with Director Stefani, we're trying to put this position, again, on par with other positions, there's also additional responsibilities that this individual would hold with a, I don't want to say a bit of reorganization, but reorganization, I guess, of responsibilities for the position, so, again, this three thousand would be compensating them for those additional responsibilities and for always going above and beyond. So, again, this three thousand would be compensating them for those additional responsibilities and for always going above and beyond.
Anyone else? Joan, would you please call the roll?
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Coor?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Motion passes. Amendment nineteen dash twelve, to increase voting hours into the evening and include weekend hours to add three thousand dollars to election salaries using the savings from amendment nineteen dash oh six. This is put forth by Alders, Coor, and Kitzler.
Move to approve.
A second.
Okay, would you?
So this is, this is an amendment to add and for us to consider and to push evening and weekend hours, whether that's working with the library or different, you know, venues or facilities or city hall. But in those considerations, you know, just personally, I didn't want finances to be a hindrance to that consideration, for one. And then, two, I think in this next year, although we're not having any larger elections, it would be a good year to experiment or to put into practice such practices. See how they go so that we can implement them coming in 2020 when, you know, voter turnout will be much higher. And then, three, which is a little bit of a, I don't know, a little bit of a side comment on this amendment is, you know, I'm certainly against the current proposal in the state assembly for changing the presidential primary and adding costs to city municipalities throughout the state. So that's a separate aside, but wanted to include that political comment here.
Anyone else?
I would just say that I'm supporting this amendment because I feel strongly about opening it up outside of business hours at city hall for people to be able to vote. I think it's critically important to extend hours and make available the opportunity for people who, you know, may work nine to five, may have shift work, may have family responsibilities that make it nearly impossible for them to come to vote on voting day. And they shouldn't be left out of the process because of those hindrances.
Anyone else? Alder Groupie?
Whether or not it decreases in-person absentee voting, I know that that has been a great strain on our staff at election season. And I think part of the idea of implementing this would save people from the trouble of having to do that in advance for fear of missing election day voting. I think it's great.
Anyone else? City Clerk Andrews? Do you have anything to say about it?
Why, yes, I do. I did contact the city of Madison, and the reason that the city of Madison implemented their various satellite locations for voting was to deal with the overwhelming number of voters who lined up in city hall. They had three thousand at a time lined up and outside the door. It wasn't to increase absentee voting opportunities, it was to lighten their workload in city hall. I have not had a request for this type of thing for additional hours. City Hall has handled the increased traffic that we have. Voter turnout is extremely high in Manona and always has been. This last election was an all-time winner of ninety point sixty-seven percent, way to go, Manona. There has not been a call for this, there has not been people unable to get to the polling place. If people call me, I mean, that I've heard of, that I've heard of. People call me and I offer to stay and meet with them after hours if that's what they require. Polling locations are open thirteen hours. Absentee voting by mail is available two business days before the election, up until that time. There are other options. But the increase of this will require the city clerk and/or deputy clerk to be available for all of those hours for questions, because that's what happens in larger elections. In particular, every nuance or type of voting situation will come up that you don't normally see. It will require the expertise of the clerk or the deputy clerk. In addition, there were times I needed to call the Wisconsin Elections Commission during our in-person absentee times. They're not going to be available those hours to call. We will have to turn people away when we can't resolve their issue. So I, in addition, this will mean that the deputy clerk, who is an hourly employee, will have to take either comp time or some other way to cover, so that she can get her time back. And that puts strain on the city hall staff because we all need to then cover her position. And that creates, there's three of us that then piggyback into that, into that job. So I'm just feeling that we did a very good job handling the increased traffic that we had in the way that we do our, we adjust many of our processes to make it work for people. I will do a survey of area communities and see how many are actually providing after-hours and weekend voting. I don't think there's that many, and I will find out. If they are, they're a very large city. Manona's not a large city. I did not get any complaints about long lines at the polling place. It doesn't seem to be something that I'm getting a whole lot of requests for. That said, we'll look at it if it's obviously the council's purview to request this type of thing. But I just know that it's going to create a bit more stress, so. Thank you.
Alder Kitzler? And then Alder Wood?
So, I mean, I think we can look through the logistics. I mean, I'd be interested if Madison always has the deputy or assistant deputy on call.
They do, they have a staff member on.
Yeah, I know Madison does weekend hours, so I'm guessing they probably call a state office. So anyways, I mean, we can debate the logistics and the practicality of it. But, you know, I don't think we necessarily need to base it off of not receiving a call because I think there's probably a number of people that don't think to call if they only have the weekend available, or they just assume that it's not available for voting. Again, in my purview, if we make it easier, and, you know, I will agree with the fact that we should probably move the state towards actual early voting, so it's not absentee voting.
I agree.
And that's certainly, you know, something I'll take up as well. But even if this makes it easier for one person to be able to come and vote, you know, I think, to me at least, that's a success. And again, you know, talking with the finance director, the three thousand, at least for the election staff, that's not including, you know, clerk and the deputy clerk, would cover, you know, what we would need at least for next year to test out the system. So, again, you know, we can work on the logistics of it, but I just don't want us not to look into it, not to do it, because either one, we have never received a request, or two, because we don't have the money in there.
Alder Wood?
I certainly appreciate the clerk's concerns about doing this, but I think we should give it a try. And I think this coming year is obviously, you know, a relatively light election schedule year. And we'll see how it goes and maybe work out some of the kinks there. But I'd like to go ahead and try to expand the hours.
Anyone else? Alder Moore?
I just have a question for the clerk, which is, seems to me that the, where the real crunch was at least in this last election, and it may not apply to the election in the spring, but again, would probably apply in 2020, was the lack of support because of the volume of early or absentee votes, if you will, that you guys had to be pulled away from your desk constantly over that time period. So it seems like in terms of an investment of dollars, looking longer term, that perhaps additional dollars dedicated to election salaries to enable you to have a part-time person or persons in there so that you guys can actually conduct your normal business for the time period. Seems like it might make sense in the longer term as well, just thinking about the next year or two. But John, I'd love to hear your thoughts about that. If you were going to, you know, invest more dollars towards elections, you know, where would you?
What I would like to see, thank you for asking. If we're going to do this additional voting hours on a regular basis, I would, I'd like to see extra staff in city hall so that we can cover the absences. Then also, I would also like to see funding for, I might even ask for it at some point, an additional voter machine at each polling place because we do, the machines are very slow. That does create a little backlog of voters lining up to get their ballot counted. I'd like to be able to, and I know that I'm supported in being able to go to legislator, legislature and try to get ballots cast, or not cast, excuse me, at least entered into the voter machine at the time that people absentee vote, which will speed up the process incredibly much. That's, that would be more of my focus, is a legislative change. I feel that if you, if we offer this, I didn't know it was going to be proposed to be used next year. I assumed it was going to be used for a larger election, which would be in two years. Once we offer it, we're not going to be able to pull it back. So this is going to create a staffing issue, so that's where I would like the money. If this is going to be something required, then we're going to need staffing. Madison has tons of people, and they hired professionally the people that work at the polling places for this additional time because they needed people with computer expertise in order to do it. If we have it, we would prefer to have it going in city hall, which also takes up our one conference room. But we can make that work. We will do our own data entry then. But I'm not comfortable with not being there for the issues that come up. So this will create a staffing issue at city hall. So, yeah, if we can get another staff member, that'd be awesome. We've been short for a long time, so this will make us shorter.
Anyone else?
I guess just a question about potential future logistics. So we do seasonal staff for Parks and Rec, for example, for pool staff. Is it, would it be something that would be possible in the future to do seasonal staff for election season for the clerk's office?
Yes, that is, yeah, it's kind of what election inspectors are. It's kind of, they are people who work only for election time. This year, and in two years, I would also do that. The last week of, the last week prior to the election, we did have staff in the conference room every day, three people, all day. And then also Saturday, nine people, in addition to myself, working on pre-processing. So we do have, we do hire additional staff to handle the workload. This would, increasing it to evening and night hours would again increase that staff. But I would have to get probably some more people. There would be training time, they would have to be certified. So there would be a pool of people that we could pull from, I would have to get, yeah. I was hoping with the, I was hoping with the electronic poll books to be able to decrease staff, and this would make it that I'd have to increase staff. I was hoping to save money one way, and the other way, this will create an increase, so. Well, you know, it's something we'd have to figure out how we're going to do it exactly and how many people. At the polling place, we have to have an odd number of people working always, which is an odd little thing, but it's true, so that nobody can claim one party is overrepresented compared to the other party. So I'm assuming it would be three people that we would have to have at the satellite area. So that's an additional, and would have to be people, again, that have some computers, they're computer literate. If we have them do the data entry, it would include material, equipment, you know. Again, I don't know how far, how, just having people sitting there taking an absentee ballots would be fairly easy. But the training, you know, we've got to get the very best people to do it, so.
Anyone else? Alder Moore?
Just, I'm very appreciative of the interest in extending vote hours, but it strikes me that, I mean, I could be wrong, I don't know what the percentage is of voters for the elections in the off-years, the aldermanic, mayoral election. But, I mean, if the intent of this, this year is to be able to sort of test it out, and it just makes me wonder whether or not it's going to be really enough of a test to be able to, to be able to know, you know, what we're up against in 2020 and whether or not it makes sense instead to spend this year, rather than focusing on the specific election, whether it makes sense to figure out this year what the best reallocation of resources would be to me.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that because a normal year, a normal, I mean, a normal election is about two-hundred-and-fifty voters, and that's.
Absentee.
Absentee voters, excuse me, yes, absentee voters. That's not a burden in any way, it's not, we can handle that, no problem. And we handled the thirteen-hundred that we had also. But the large elections in November are the ones that bring out the people. And that's, so a normal, I mean, a normal spring election really won't be a test because the people will be sitting there waiting for absentee voters to come in, and there won't be anybody there. So there will be a few, I think people, if you open it up for weekend and night, people will wait till the weekend and night rather than come in during the day. When they, they could come in during the day, but they choose not to because it's available, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I, it's something, I mean, I would prefer to have a year to kind of figure it out. But, again, that's at your discretion.
Alder Spade?
So if, if it's the desire of the council to have expanded voting hours for the 2020 election, my concern is that if we wait another budget year, then we're burdening your office with that request. And so I'm just trying to understand how we accomplish the goal without undue burden on you. Because certainly, you know, talk is cheap, and doing this is going to require money. And I don't, but I also respect what you're saying as far as, you know, I don't want you to, this to make it an eighty-hour week for you for the month preceding the election. So I'm trying to understand.
Well, I don't, I, it will make it an eighty-hour week for me before the election. There's no way around it, because additional hours, I will have to be there for those hours. Any of these additional hours. I'll have to be available to answer questions, come in and out of the room, gather the, I mean, do the data entry of the ballots because they all have to be handled. I'll have to organize them and seal them up and put them and lock them up. They have to be secure, there has to be a chain of custody. We won't have the courier that Madison requires, but the, there's work to be done on each ballot that's processed. So it will, it will be, it will be additional work, there's no doubt. We do have to cut it off by Friday before the election because. we need to be able to run reports and poll books and be prepared for the pre-processing the following day. So there's no, we won't be able to do it the Saturday before the election. So in order to be ready for that, so there's that. So, yeah, it's gonna be, no, it's gonna be, I mean, there's no way around it, it's gonna be a burden for me. But that's my job, I don't, if that's the will of the council, that's what I'll do. I just don't, I, I don't know. Our turnout, our voter turnout doesn't seem to warrant it to me, but if that's what.
Alda Kitzler?
And don't get me wrong, I appreciate, I appreciate everything she's saying and, you know, all the work that you put in, Joan. And that, you know, all the work that you have to put in is one of the reasons why I was looking at next year to test the system out. Because I feel if it gets to 2020, we put this in the budget and we want additional hours, it will just be so much extra work to, in some ways, guess and check on what works, what doesn't, what do we have to adapt to, what staffing do we need? And I'm hoping this next year, and I should have put this in here, but the 3,000 is only including potentially two weekends and two weeks of evening hours, but up to, I should say. But that's why I was looking at next year, so that we can really look at the system, see what works. Yeah, we might get a very small trickle in, but at least I feel like we would get a sense for what venues work, what staffing levels we need, what, you know, do we need another machine? And then we can look at the 2020 budget if we do need another machine, if we do need additional seasonal staff or different things like that. And we can address those at that time. Because the last thing I would wanna do is go into either, you know, a presidential primary election or the presidential election and, you know, fall flat on our face not knowing, you know, what the left arm is saying to the right or whatever, you know. So again, there's a lot to work out in this, but, you know, the bottom line is, I do believe that we can and we should be offering at least a few weekend hours. And, you know, that can be a debate as well, I suppose.
Alder Wood?
Well, I'd be interested to hear what you think, Mayor, since you serve as a chief election judge, I think.
Well, I've thought for a long time that we should have some weekend hours. I don't think it makes any sense to have it, for instance, at the libraries opposed to City Hall. I just, especially with this whole custody thing, all of it would have to be taken over to City Hall anyway. Joan would still have to be involved, or Eileen. To me, it just makes more sense to have it at City Hall where we're set up for it. But I, I certainly appreciate Joan's concerns about the extra time because she puts in a lot of time the couple of weeks before the election as it is and the week or two after, and that's assuming we don't have a recount. There, processing these absentees is, just at the polls, it's like a five-step process. And then before it gets to the polls, there's also, I don't know, there must be four or five other steps before that, aren't there, Joan? I mean, you have to fill out this envelope and sign the back of that one and, oh, don't sign over here, you know, it's just, and every year the legislature changes the rules. So it's not like you can train somebody to do this every other year for a week. Because it's, it's really, it's unnecessarily complicated, but it is very complicated. If we could just put that in the ballot machine that day at the polls, that would save, I mean, at, at City Hall or whatever, that would save about 90% of the, of the work involved. But unfortunately, we can't do that, so. This year, I think they were feeding ballots, absentees in at the community center until like 9:30 that night, weren't they? Polls were closed for an hour and a half and they were still processing, so. So I can see both sides. But I don't think it makes sense to have it anywhere off-site. I can see in Madison when it's a huge city, but it's not like Manona's that big that the library is across the street from City Hall. But I, I do think Joan has a point also that when Eileen, who's the assistant clerk, then would be taking her comp time, then Joan or Leah are constantly at the front window doing what Eileen normally does and not doing their regular work. And it's just, we just, we don't have enough staff at City Hall is another part of the issue.
Right.
And again, we have a limited budget and we try to fill positions by order of priority and everybody needs help, so. I don't know, does that help?
Yeah, it does. Just one other comment, actually, it just occurs to me, I think it might be more important to have this available in a year like, say, next year. I think when we have the election like we just had or likely to have in 2020 with a very highly motivated voting populace, that you're, we're gonna have very high turnout, I think it may be, this may be of more benefit in some of the lower turnout elections to give people more opportunities, make it easier, basically, is what we're trying to do for people to vote, so.
Yeah, I have a feeling we probably won't see that many more voters total. I think it's just a matter of when they come to fill out their ballot, most likely.
Alda Corr?
Don't we have special voting opportunities at some of the senior center sites?
No, we take, we have voting deputies who go to the Heritage, Manona and, but that's different than this would be. They, isn't it, Joan, they go to each individual patient who is homebound or whatever?
I understand, but we do something out of the normal voting process for folks who are homebound. So I would argue that this is something that we can do for our voters who have other needs.
Right, I understand that. I think we just have to take into consideration how much time the staff has to work additional hours in weeks when they're already working 60 or 70 hours a week, so. I know many evenings, Joan, you're there, aren't you, and weekends, just catching up on stuff.
Yep.
Alda Corr?
Then I would just encourage people that if they feel strongly about this process, that they should contact their legislators and argue that we should be allowed to process the votes as they come in.
That would be very helpful.
If this is really something people feel strongly about.
Yep.
Anyone else?
One final kind of question and comment. So I fully support the spirit of this and my concern, the more we talk about it, is is $3,000 a realistic number for what we're asking to do? And what I'm getting at, I think Alda Corr just related to something that might be appropriate. I mean, you know, we do have a radio station and we have other ways to really get the word out to promote a very unique opportunity. So we could have a particular week where we're going to have extended hours. You know, the weekend prior and the week leading up to that final dark weekend when nothing happens and we're preparing for Election Day. But, you know, I don't know, is, is that a $3,000 proposition? Is it a $5,000 proposition?
I did, I did the math for you, Drew. Basically, I took the three, three workers per week and I did the hours and that's kind of what we had. I think if you're gonna test it, this would be the year to figure that out too. But I think it's fairly, it's gonna give or take a little, some numbers, but it's pretty close to 3,000.
Okay.
Per election. That does include the deputy clerk, which one thing he would have to do is maybe fluctuate their hours where she works eight to five and Joan works one day. That'd be the one way to get around some of that stuff, there wasn't the comp time issues and overtime issues. So that would be the one challenge you would have to look at as far as the scheduling around that time would be some scheduling issues we would have to work around. I mean, there's probably ways to do it, we just have to figure out how. I don't know if that helps you.
Yeah, no, that does, that does.
Because the primary additional money, I'm assuming, goes for the election inspectors who are paid bucks an hour or whatever. So Joan and Eileen wouldn't be getting any more, any additional pay, so.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Moore?
Nay.
Alda Spade?
I'll, I'll vote aye.
Okay, Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alda Kitzler?
Aye.
Alda Corr?
Aye.
Alda Groupie?
Aye, with a commitment to really push for that legislative change, Joan. I apologize to you.
Okay, motion passes. The final amendment, does Alder Wood have to formally withdraw this or, or since we passed?
I won't move it.
Okay.
Well, somebody else wants to, but we already, yeah, there's no point in.
The final amendment deals with the 10,000 increase number of IT hours. So if you're not going to move it, we will move on to the next item, which is oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there, is there a motion to approve the budget?
Yeah, we have the.
As amended.
As amended, there you go. So we had that motion by Alda Kitzler and Alda Groupie. And we need the final numbers eventually. That fill in here.
Which, sorry, which, are you gonna announce those?
Oh. Property tax required finances.
To approve the overall budget. Yes, it's amended.
Sorry.
So the total levy amount is $7,420,261 with a mill rate of tax rate of 6.56 per thousand.
I have a question.
Alda Wood?
How much then, or, because I think we reduced the levy with the total of the amendments, if my math is right, by $1,049?
That's what I have, too.
And did we already have some room under the levy or had we used absolutely?
We're at, so basically, we were right at the levy. So now we're $1,049 over the levy.
Okay, then I would move that we sweep that $1,049 and, and use that levy to reduce the fund, use of fund balance.
I'll second that.
Do you understand what I mean? We would raise, yeah.
Yeah, so basically it was zero.
Right.
Any discussion about that or questions? Alda Spade?
I would just like to comment on why I support it and would urge my colleagues to do the same. Every year when we face this dilemma of the levy limit, which has been imposed on us by the legislature in their infinite wisdom, when it, it is true that we have the ability to do a little kind of magic and reclaim some of the increase that we don't take one year the next. But it's, it's always a little bit of fuzzy math. Like basically, we have an ability to borrow a certain amount or to spend a certain amount of money and to tax our citizens for that. And I think we all agree, and this budget is a testament to our attempt to carefully weigh all of those competing priorities. But given that we have that cap, it is in our interest to, provided we're not just spending money on frivolous things, and I, I don't believe we have. So given that, if we're doing right by the taxpayers, we should be spending that 2%. Because often there are things like health insurance premiums that are gonna eat up that increase anyway. So it's, every year we're almost having to cut services, even though thanks to redevelopment and things like that, we're able to keep pace with the needs of the community. But whenever we take out of that fund balance, you know, that's, that's our rainy day fund. And so we have to be careful when we spend that money because when we have an emergency, that's where we're going to go for money. And while it may seem enticing to knock a few pennies off of the property tax bill for, for the taxpayers right now, I think the prudent thing to do is for us to max that out, given, again, that we believe in what this budget represents for the community. And then next year we'll start with that higher plateau on which then if, if the community needs all of that 2% increase to, to meet the needs, then we'll have it. I'm not sure that makes sense, but.
Anyone have any questions?
Mark, do you have a number for what the, what the percentage increase would be and on the average home, what the?
Was that amendment approved or not?
Wait and vote.
I didn't, I.
It hasn't been approved yet.
It hasn't been approved.
The average is $166,500.
Okay, so probably the amendment is not gonna make any difference about that regarding that. Does anybody have any other questions?
Just so you know, we will still be at 22% of our fund balance policy.
All in favor of approving Doug's amendment to take the remaining savings and put it towards the fund balance, say aye. It is a roll call, it's over 500, yes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alda Corr?
Aye.
Alda Groupie?
Aye.
Alda Moore?
Aye.
Alda Spade?
Aye.
Alda Wood?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, before we vote on the budget as amendment, is there any more information anybody needs from Mark? What is the average value, the value of the average home in Manona? No, is it 270?
Three, three, 317,100.
317?
That was your assessment.
Oh, I was just, okay. Okay, does anyone else have any other questions from Mark? Is there a motion to approve the budget as amended?
We've already done, we don't need to do that because we've, we need to vote on as amended. We had an original motion, we've amended it.
Well, that's true, we amended all the separate, okay, all right. Will the clerk please, hearing no other questions about budget, will the clerk please call the roll again?
Okay, Alda Groupie?
Aye.
Alda Moore?
Aye.
Alda Spade?
Aye.
Alda Wood?
Aye.
Alda Kitzler?
Aye.
The budget is passed, is approved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next item, 18-11-2310. Awarded contract for construction of Riverfront.
Thank you, Sarah, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it's, in fact, it's out of order.
No one wants to stay for the best part of the whole council meeting, I guess.
It's in order on this agenda, but out of order on this.
Thank you.
So can I go ahead and say? I guess we have things a little bit of out of order on these agendas. We might as well do Jake first and then we'll take the CSM, it's opposite on the agenda we got the other day, but.
No.
Awarded contract for construction of Riverfront Park Plaza concession stand and public restroom facility. And this is first read. So Jake?
I've been told I can clear a room, but I guess that's just some of my finest work. So the interior build-out of the concession stand at the Riverfront Development was put out to bid in October. We received 11 bids, which was great, so our final estimate was in a range of 425 to 450, $100,000 to build out the concession stand and the storage unit. The apparent low bidder, T2 Contractors, is out from Toma. We were originally a little concerned over the discrepancy in the bid amount versus what the other bidders were. All the other bidders were local, more local. So we did contact the references that T2 Contractors had. We looked at any outstanding litigation, which there was none, had the contractors down on site to review the plans and review the site and really make sure that they were aware of everything that was gonna happen with this project. And after that review, the architect and myself were confident in recommending this contractor to be awarded the bid. This was recommended for approval at the Parks and Recreation Board meeting on the 13th of November.
Any questions for Jake?
This will be partly funded by the Knowles Nelson Grant, correct?
Correct, yep, the city was awarded the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant, 300,000. The city was awarded the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant, $348,300 and $150,000, and that is allocated to the concession buildout.
But we cannot start on that until the money's actually...
Yep, that is correct. So a little bit, start date is to be determined, once we hear from DNR on when we'll get the money.
Okay, anyone else? Alder Spade?
So is this, this is below budget, or?
It is, it is of our final budget that we used in estimating, and actually with our grant application. I did put in the recommendation that we carry $40,000 for contingency in some of our owner direct purchases.
And it's still below budget with that?
It'll probably, yeah, right, right around there then.
Okay.
450.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the Finance Director said we have 450 in the budget, so we're one thirty.
Okay, that's what I was...
We don't tell him he's over, because he'll spend it.
Right, I was just gonna say that.
Maybe, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, well, you might as well stay up there, and we'll discuss this other one, and then we'll go back to the CSM. Ordinance 11-18-709 relating to vaping in city parks and expulsion for rule violations put forth by the Parks and Recreation Board. Jake?
Oh, first read.
Yeah, this is first read.
So, we had discussed at the certification about smoking in parks, or banning smoking in parks, existing ordinance that was carried over was, smoking is prohibited where posted. There was no signage posted in any city park outlawing smoking. Since I've been here, since 2008, previously Parks and Recreation Board recommended that we ban smoking. We came back and discussed it a little bit further, wanted to, the consensus of the board was to ban smoking and e-cigarettes and vaping at major institutions and parks, so playgrounds, park shelters, ball fields, et cetera, and have a buffer zone of 50 feet. So there would still be areas in the parks that you could smoke legally, we'd have signs posted, and then there was individual parks that we listed in your packet of, that, based on the size of the park, it would make sense just to outlaw smoking completely in those parks. Coupled with this ordinance that Attorney Cole drafted up for us would be an expulsion, ordinance that allows the Parks and Rec Director some authority to be able to expel people from parks for a certain amount of time. This is more of a issue that we have with chronic violators of ordinances. We have a handful of people that continue to defy suggestions or my comments, and sometimes by the time the police come, they're gone. And so this just gives us the opportunity, or at least the last kind of carrot of, if you want to keep coming to this park, you'll stop doing X, Y, and Z.
Any questions on either of these items?
May I, if I could, add one thing?
Sure.
Jake's initial proposal had listed specifically the areas where smoking and the vaping would be precluded. Rather than doing it that way, I have in the ordinance, just, it is areas as posted. The reason for that is just because, as you change things, it makes sense to not have to go back and amend your ordinance. If you want to temporarily prohibit smoking somewhere, you can do that without an ordinance change, that sort of thing. That said, though, at some point in time, somebody's going to have to decide what parks and what areas need to be precluded. So, you can do that one of several ways. One, the council could just, you could do it as Jake had proposed, do it right in ordinance. Alternatively, you can just pass a resolution that says, the following places are hereby designated no smoking. Or thirdly, you could just authorize somebody else to make that decision, whether it be the Park Board or Jake. So, to the extent, at some point, that decision's going to have to be made, and maybe it's a good time to give consideration now, and we can certainly build into, for the final reading, whatever you wanted to do, as far as who would make that, that decision.
Alder Kitzler, and then Alder Wood.
So, with that, I would actually make the argument to allow Parks Board to decide which parks, you know, like council, it's open meetings, we post the agendas, but I think they are ultimately aware of kind of usage, but also our desire to have either programs there, or different things like that, that might affect it. And then it also, it makes the action happen quicker as well. So, that would be my, my two cents, and my feeling is just to allow the Parks Board to make that decision.
Alder Wood?
I, I wouldn't have a problem with allowing Parks Board to, to make the decision. So, I do, I was got a little confused back when we were doing the whole sort of re-recalification project, where we were on whether we had prohibited smoking in parks or not. I thought we had not.
We had not, correct.
So this, this agenda item was kind of misleading then, because it only talks about vaping, and it's really the whole smoking and everything, right?
Correct, yeah.
Well, I, I should, I have to correct things, but subsection 21 did exist prior to the calification, I mean, obviously under a different number. So, smoking was precluded.
It was.
Prior to recalification. Is all this ordinance does, at least section one of the ordinance.
Right.
Is it includes vaping within the definition of smoking.
Okay, so that was, okay, thanks, that clarifies that. I have a problem, I guess, more so with section two of giving the Park Director that ability to expel people for 180 days for violating those provisions without any conviction. I mean, if the judge wanted, you know, if we wanted to give the authority to the municipal judge to ban people from parks, that's one thing, to just give it to a, a member of our city staff, that authority, I, I can't support that. I think it's a, you know, 180-day ban would be a draconian remedy, in my, in my view.
Anyone? Alder Moore?
Well, I would just say, my understanding is, is it says that the director may expel, so it's not, you know, requiring the director, and I think we're talking about more, obviously you wouldn't exercise that unless it was a chronic thing, right? Like, somebody at the skate park, for instance, and that.
It wouldn't be a crime to smoke, it'd be an ordinance violation. He'd be allowed, under this, to expel people from the parks, and it does say may, for up to six months, I believe it says, 180 days.
Right.
For violating those provisions. It does say may, that gives him discretion, I don't know that we're providing him with the direction then of how to exercise that discretion. But, to me, it's just too, it's just like, well, I've already said it, it's too draconian a remedy, you know, without knowing more about, you know, what the problem is you're trying to, to address.
Could I, could I just say something? I wondered why these two were combined in one resolution, because this isn't, this expulsion section isn't just referring to people smoking. It's, in fact, you proposed it because of some other problems you've been having, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So it really seems like these two items should be considered separately.
Sure.
That should be clarified, because it would cover, I assume, chapter 321 includes then other things. That should be clarified for next time.
We, I can just bifurcate it into two separate...
I think that would be a good idea.
Are there any strong feelings from the council about the 180 days? I mean, I, I heard Alder Wood, you can certainly debate it when it comes up for final review, but if there's strong feelings, whether or not it now, I can certainly change that number. That was arbitrary.
Okay, I was going to ask if there was any sort of basis for that, if you pulled from an existing ordinance in another municipality, or, it does seem like quite a lot to me.
No, I, the, I think the initial request was a, a permanent one, and I, I had some constitutional concerns about that. So I felt it was imperative that we impose some kind of time limit on it. I selected that simply because it's drafted to be up to 180 days, with the idea that that would be Jake's maximum authority, but it would be much more likely he would impose lesser penalties.
Alder Core?
What would be the enforcement of this?
They would be, if they were expelled, then, and they returned to the park, they would be trespassing in the park.
Okay.
And then be issued a citation.
Thank you.
And I would just clarify this. We've had situations where police officers are having issues with potential people. Sometimes at the skate park, sometimes, you know, the latest one's been with dogs. We've had people habitually propping open doors at the shelters and harassing people at the parks. And so, these are people that I meet out on a normal occasion, and, you know, will witness them violating our ordinances, and, you know, we can call the police and wait, and wait, and wait, or they don't come because they have more important things to do, or we can remind them again, for the 10th, 12th, 100th time, that you can't do that in a park. It does give us the opportunity that we're, next time they do it, and the police, there's actually some enforcement in our ordinance, so they can be fined. You know, we drafted letters before from individuals that were causing issues at our skate park, that you're now banned, or at the outdoor pool, for example, but this now gives us the ability via ordinance to actually carry out that temporary. But it, there are situations where it's taxing for all people involved, city staff, police, et cetera, when we have these kind of repeat offenders that are making the enjoyment of others of our parks less enjoyable.
Would, I know when you and I had originally talked about this, you were also talking about, say, banning someone from participating in a particular class at the pool, or something. Would this cover that? Because is the pool, you say, from any park, is that encompassed in that?
Yeah, I would, I would...
Any kind of program activity, they'd be involved in also?
Correct, I mean, I, I think there's, we want people to enjoy the parks, but we want to have them obey the ordinances that you guys set. And if people can't do it, or won't do it, I think we need to have some opportunity or ability to say, you don't get that privilege to utilize our park anymore, or for a certain amount of time, until you stop violating this ordinance. And whether it's smoking, or letting your dog off-leash, or swearing at people, or, you know, damaging our facilities, it gets a little redundant when we just keep calling the police every single time on the same amount of people, you know, and it's, it's literally, it's less than a handful of people that we have what I would call ongoing issues with.
Alder Moore, then Alder Wood.
Well, it does, I mean, it does strike, it does strike me that, you know, the, the way the ban is written, which is to say that it would allow for frequent violators of parks ordinance to be banned for up to 180 days, to me, it seems a little bit too, it's not the 180 days that's arbitrary, it seems, it seems like the decision could be arbitrary, which is to say, you know, resident A, you know, you've slapped the hand of three times, and they're kind of jerky when you slap their hand, and so the fourth time, you decide you're going to slap them with a ban, and then resident B, you slap their hand four times, but they're nice about it, and so you don't. I mean, it just, so, it just seems like unless there's some sort of consistency in how, that it really opens you personally up, and the city up, to kind of an arbitrary of like, who you're going to ban, and who you're not, and why you're going to ban them, and how many events have to occur before they get banned, et cetera, in a way that really is a little bit concerning for...
It's a valid point, that's one I considered when I was drafting this, because I, I frankly thought, you know, we could say, after somebody has been found guilty of two or more municipal tickets.
Right.
Which would certainly appease the sort of due process.
Right, or three strikes, you're out, or something, right, yeah.
The concern I have with that is, to Jake's point, he, he's looking for a, a way to sort of quickly address a problem. And if we need convictions, presumably the deterrent effect of a citation is much greater than the deterrent effect of expulsion. So if he needed to get the convictions, you're going to have Arden gone through the ticket process, you know what I mean? So we can do it that way, I think it just does, it undercuts the ability to sort of quickly remedy a chronic rule violation. It will end up being a two-year exercise, where he will have a citation issued, he'll go through a muni court, he'll get convicted, a second citation will be issued, it'll go through muni court, he'll be convicted, and then there'll be a third violation. At that time, Jake would then summarily would expel him under his authority. Muni court from, from the time a ticket is issued, until it's adjudicated, particularly if somebody pleads not guilty initially, you're looking at three or four months-ish. So, two of those, you're, you're looking at a, a year, you know, if you wanted to do it that way. But, to your point, it does certainly then negate this issue of any arbitrariness. That's why I put in there that it is subject to an administrative appeal, to at least provide the constitutional due process that somebody's entitled.
Alder Wood, then Alder Groupie, then Alder Kitzler.
So, although the administrative review would be to the Park and Recreation Board, which I'm not sure if I were the subject of an expulsion order, I would feel like I was necessarily going to get a very fair shake from the Park and Rec Board, that I'd feel a lot more confident that a municipal judge would be more an independent decision-maker. I think what this kind of goes back to, though, is, we could give the Park and Recreation Director citation authority, but I think from talking to you before, you're not really interested in doing that, right?
Correct.
And why is that?
Well, I'd like to have a 10-year contract, then.
Okay, can you?
You know, and, and be just like a police officer, you know, they're not subject to administrative staff, and, you know, that's, I think, a big part of this. And this, and this is dipping a little bit into those waters of, you know, Mary's best friend happens to let her dog run in the park, you know, every day of the week, and I finally expel her, and she comes and yells to Mary, and Mary yells to Mark, and, you know, it can go...
Not that I would ever do that.
Yes, far be that a mask. But, I think, given my role in the community and being a director level, it's not like I'm out patrolling the parks for nuisance, you know, violations, but when I am in the parks, and I see, you know, violations of our ordinance happening, there is some, like, do I say something, do I not say something? If someone's here that recognizes who I am, do they, is there a reasonable expectation that I should go and talk to this individual? And so that, whether it's during business hours, or, you know, whether I'm out enjoying the parks just like anyone else. And so I, I don't think I want to be involved in writing ordinance citations. We had, we're talking about other options and opportunities that may present itself in the coming years for a park ranger or contracted service, but this is merely to address some very habitual chronic violators of our park ordinances, that we can keep calling the police, they may or may not be able to show up. It's, it's not necessarily a, a priority, you know, for our patrol officers, given everything else that they deal with, but yet it is affecting some, if, if not our staff's, you know, ability to do their jobs, or for other people to enjoy the parks that they're meant to be.
Alder Groupie?
I guess just to speak to Nancy's point, and it may just be a superfluous comment, but I guess, I feel to some degree, anyone who's handing out a consequence or a citation, it is up to them and their discretion at times, how they proceed with that. So I think there's some amount of that that occurs, no matter who is doling out a consequence or a reprimand. So I think that's an important point to keep in mind. And I guess, it just seems like it's clear that it needs a little bit of workshopping, I think separating out the components, as Attorney Cole suggested would be a wise way to sort of just make sure that it's not confusing. But that's, that's my comment.
Alder Kitzler?
I mean, I think a lot of my points were made by Jake's comments, but, and I apologize I had to step out, so maybe this was already covered as well, but, I mean, so Parks, it came to Parks Board because we do have habitual offenders of this. We don't have a way to enforce it, because the police... We don't have a way to enforce it, because the police are not showing up to the skate park or different things like that. And so, I mean, the board, when we discussed it, I mean, Jake's, obviously, he's one individual, and we shouldn't base any policies around him always being in this capacity. So I do take that in regard. But, you know, I, I think somebody at the director level does have a lot of leniency to individuals. And, and maybe there's a way to build in some sort of proof. I know you have videos of certain habitual offenders that we could always file away and kind of have on the back shelf if somebody appeals it. But, I mean, it does say up to 180 days. It doesn't have to be 180 days, depending on whatever. But it just gives us a way to enforce some of our rules, where we have been having challenges to enforce it, and the ability to enforce it right away. And by right away, I mean after habitual, you know, offenses here, you know, throughout the years. But, yeah, so, those are my comments, and I just wanted to make sure I shared those.
Alder Spade.
So I guess I'm really struggling with this, and Alder Wood made some of the points that I was struggling with. I don't under, if, if you're gonna give out this, you know, I don't know what we call it. It's not a citation, but if you, a punishment, you know. You're doling out the punishment without an actual trial. So you're just saying, well, no, I've observed you violating, you've ignored my requests for compliance, and you are hereby expelled from Menona City Parks. So what I'm not understanding is, you know, by taking that action, you are definitely putting yourself far more in the crosshairs of, you know, potential abuse of power than simply writing a citation for what we all agree is a rule that's being broken, which has a consequence, which is then it goes before a judge. And I realize the delay issue is of concern, but in my mind, I would, if I were you, I would rather write, you know, 10 citations, and then maybe, as this extra extraordinary measure, have the ability to say, "I hereby expel you for 90 days, and you're expelled." You know, but that, to me, that has to be the second action. Like, it doesn't make sense that you would not have the power to write a citation, but that you would have the power to expel someone. That just doesn't, I, I can't wrap my head around that, you know. And so, you'd be allowing yourself to have the one extraordinary power while being afraid to have just the common power of, you know, hey, you didn't pay your parking meter, and you're gonna get this $40 ticket. You see what I'm saying?
I do, and I don't think that the intent was that it would be after multiple citations. However, we do have outdoor pool season, you know, 100 days, summer 90-plus days. And so, especially with a, a signed smoking ordinance, or a potential ban of smoking in certain areas, I anticipate we could potentially have multiple complaints about smoking happening within an area that's signed, that's posted as no smoking. And so how do we want to handle that? You know, are we gonna try to have a police officer come and talk to someone? Are we going to continue to have conversations with those people as, you know, department staff? I think that's where we're looking at, to at least have a little bit of ability to, I don't wanna say be a principal, but like our school, our parks and our facilities are much like the school system in one way, and I'm the principal. You know, as, as a director of the department, I do get cases and issues that come to me all the time. And they're, they can be, they can sound trivial, you know. It's like, teen B is sitting at the Dream Park and swearing and, you know, running around with their underwear around their head, whatever it may be, you know. But these are, these are cases that can happen over time or build up. And if we're not getting response from the police department, or the time that it takes the police department to do a case or a review can extend out later. And really, I think we're just looking at, we've had issues where the police said, can we write a letter saying you're now banned from this facility for this individual? Okay, you know, but if we don't have an ordinance, there's really nothing that can hold, you know, the people to it regardless. I don't, I'm not looking at us going, you're banned, you're banned, you're banned, you're banned. It's, it's really a, a last resort of trying to get some compliance into ordinance violations.
Okay, so, so even if I grant you that as a process, that it might make sense, and I can understand some of what you just said with respect to, you know, it's just a season, it's the summer, basically. This is, so some, if we just go through the regular judicial process, you know, if someone makes a violation in June, they're not even gonna be affected until after the season. So I get that. But then what, what I'm struggling with still is this idea that, you know, let's say you give out this ban, you give a 90-day expulsion. And then, you know, 10 days later, this individual is in the park. And he says, hey, you know, go, you know, whatever. Yeah, you know.
Something like that.
Right? I mean.
Well, then that, then they're cited by the police for trespassing or whatever ordinance they want to refer to. And at that point, that gives us the ability to call the police and say, there's person A, you know, that's now been banned from the park, in the park.
So that, so that's actually more what this, because that, that helps explain it. I mean, this allows us to essentially have a more significant violation in progress that would then command the attention of our police. And then it's, that's still gonna end up going before a judge. You know, my, I guess if, if the city attorney can, you know, convince me that that process, because that's what I'm trying to understand, the totality of this process. I mean, obviously, if someone breaks the rules, you confront them, it leads to an expulsion, and they never show up in a city park again, well, then all is good with the world. But I just don't see that as a practical likely outcome. I would see the opposite, which is where this is someone who's a troublemaker, and they're gonna come back, they're gonna test you. And the expulsion, on some level, just seems like this kind of, you know, imaginary punishment. And then, you know, we're, I don't know, I just, I'm finding it, I'm trying to understand how this would play out as a practical matter.
Jake may know better than I, but I, I anticipate it would play out with the people that are chronic violators of very minimal rules, that don't warrant immediate police response. But it is a disturbance, it's annoyance to participants or whatever, you know. And I'm thinking on the order of, smoking would be one of them. Somebody that is just rude to people that are disrupting a event, but not really disrupting it to the point where there's, you know, the event doesn't occur. I think the dog stuff, you know, the dog, non-nuish, dogs pooping in the park and that getting cleaned up. My suspicion would be, those are chronic violators, that they're gonna keep doing it, and the police aren't gonna be able to come and enforce it, because by the time they get there, the person with their dog is long gone and, and that sort of thing. We constitutionally, oftentimes, we impose punishments and allow for review after the fact. That's not the preferred way to do it, but it, it does occur, and it sometimes has to occur. I, if I'm hearing the council write, there's concern about a large amount of what could be somewhat unfettered discretion to the director. Maybe the remedy is to just reduce dramatically the 180 days. Reduce dramatically the authority you give him now. So at least from his standpoint, he has some ability to quickly address an issue. But to address the concerns that are raised tonight, he doesn't have the ability to expel somebody for a traffic violation. And that may be one way to address some of the concerns that y'all raised tonight.
Does it get written up, written up? I mean, do you, do you, if you expel someone for 30 days, I mean, are you gonna fill out a form or something? I mean, it's like, where, because then it just becomes, he said.
Right, yeah, no, it'd be a paper cradle documentation of, on this date, we had this encounter with this person, you know. These are the last six occurrences that we've had. On this date, they were issued their.
Do you file that with the police? You know, is it just like a, it's like something that, it gets filed, but obviously the police have? It's just like when you have a fender bender and they're not able to show up, and you go in and you fill out the paperwork sort of thing?
It's the equivalent of a police report. I mean, a police report just gets filed with the police department.
Right.
You know, and it's not evidence of anything until hearing. This would be a report that would get filed with the Park and Rec Department. I would need that, because frankly, if I'm going to prosecute somebody for trespassing in violation of an order, I'm gonna need documentation that there was such an order, when it was granted, so I know they're within their expulsion period and so forth.
Okay.
Alder Coore, did you have a question?
I just was curious if this has gone through PD at all, or if they've had input on this.
No, we haven't.
I'd like to see that maybe this comes to, at least PD gets consulted. I mean, this is kind of.
Oh, the police department. I thought you were saying Police and Fire Commission.
No, no, no.
It's not been under Police and Fire Commission. Yes, we've consulted with the police department. You know, they're fine. They frankly can't assist us very well right now, the way it is in park violations. The, the chances of getting an officer to a scene, in which I'm calling, is about 1 in 10. So, and these are, listen, this is not like someone's metal detecting in the park. They've run their dog off-leash, there's someone, you know, dog in the playground on a slide. It's, you know, harassment, someone's harassing or yelling at. These are not like high-level crimes, so to speak, but they're on the books as ordinance violations. And we just can't get to, our police officers cannot get to the scene or to a park quick enough before the, the situation either resolves itself or people have left. I'd much rather have the police come to every single call and take care of it for us. That's just not a reality. And so we either not have ordinances and not have these laws, and just let people do what they want in parks, or we have to find some way that we can acceptably, at least try to work with our ordinances.
Alder Kitzler?
Did you have another question?
No, I'm okay, thanks.
So, right now, our library director has the authority to kick people out of the library, and there's no ordinance violation that they have to document whatsoever. They do document the occurrence, whatever that may be, whether it's a rowdy person running around knocking books off the shelves. But when I was on the library board, I know we at least kicked out three kids. So, I mean, this isn't unfettered territory to provide a director of this authority and not have them be responsive to an ordinance in particular. One side comment, this is, and I know I've talked to Jake about it, talked to him at the park board. This is all supporting my support for a park ranger at some point, whether it's contracting out, whether that's looking at our current staffing and giving them that ability. But again, I think that helps. And then, is there a way to issue a citation after the fact? I know, I believe the police department has said if they're on video, they can submit the video online or whatever, and the police department can issue a citation. Is there a way to take a picture and issue a citation, you know, after the fact? How, is that, you know, could Jake see the repeat offender take three pictures every day that somebody's letting their dog crap in a park and then?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's not uncommon. A lot of citations are issued after the fact. There's a lot of shoplifting ones that, they're not caught at the store, they're caught at a traffic stop later on. There's a lot of those. Yeah, it presents somewhat of a proof issue for me in court. They'll say it didn't happen, but, no, it's done quite often.
So I think as much as you can, one, document, and maybe, you know, maybe the library has something that you can just replicate. But two, I mean, if you can take pictures, or, I don't know how you'd save the video or whatever, but I'm sure somebody smarter than me knows how to do that.
Anyone else? Bill, do you know the, the library's authority, or is that a state law or a library board policy, or where that comes from?
No, it comes from our code.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a provision in our code law.
Okay, so, does seem like it might be similar. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to the final item. Thank you, Jake, which is item 2A. Consideration of Resolution 18-11-2309, Approval of a Three-Lot Certified Survey Map, CSM, for Lot 5 of the South Town Assessor's Platte, this is the Shopko lot, put forth by the Plan Commission. Mark, were you gonna address this?
Yes, yeah, so, if I reference page 27 on here, if you've kind of fallen along. So this is actually Shopko dividing their lot into three separate parcels. This was actually done last year, 2017, but Shopko failed to record the CSM in the proper amount of time, so they had to resubmit. This back to the Planning Commission and Public Works Commission. Planning Commission approved with conditions on October 8, 2018, meeting with the conditions as noted in here. Also, Public Works approved it. They did have some requirements in there regarding the dark store exemption. They wanted as a condition approval. Talking with Bill, this is actually not allowable. It's actually against state statute to do this, so that condition is actually no longer valid.
Sorry, can you explain that a little bit more? They wanted a provision that wouldn't allow a dark store or a big, yeah, can you just talk about that a little bit?
I was, in the meeting, the committee member wanted to insert an amendment into the approval stating that the, the owner of the property could not use the dark store loophole in their, in contesting their assessment.
Gotcha.
And it's not, it's not allowable.
Yeah, no.
But it is in the current Public Works minutes approving this, correct?
Correct.
And that's referred to in this resolution, is it?
Yeah.
So we have to make a change?
It's Plan Commission minutes. You don't need to make any change as far as what happened with Plan Commission. Plan Commission is just, it's an approval, it's a recommendation to the council. This body could just choose to disregard that recommendation of the Plan Commission. That's.
Public Works.
Or, I'm sorry, Public Works, yeah. So it's, it's not unheard of by means, lots of times in, usually in other communities than this, that the governing body elects just not to follow the recommendation of the committee for whatever.
So we wouldn't need to amend this resolution at all?
I haven't read it, if it has it in there or not.
Second to the last, whereas.
Yes, it says as recommended by the Public Works. Is this time for first reading?
Yes.
Then.
What can we correct if it makes me hear?
Well, but we need to make sure everybody knows what they're talking about.
Recommended Public Works Committee.
It just says it's hereby approved as recommended by the Public Works Committee.
As recommended is referencing their minutes, was the way I read it anyway.
Then I would, you can certainly just strike everything after approved. So, it would read, now therefore be resolved, the three-lot certified survey map for Lot 5 of South Town Assessor's Platte, Shopko lot, as proposed, and according to Section 14-1-4 land divisions, the minimum municipal code is hereby approved, period.
Any other questions?
Well, I should, I should, I spoke out of turn. It, it sounds like it did go in front of Plan Commission, and Plan Commission did conditionally approve it.
Right.
So there would be.
We conditionally approve everything.
Yes.
So there would be other conditions than that Plan Commission had in place on this.
Just the Public Works added that one in.
Okay, then just delete out as recommended by the Public Works Committee. So it reads, it's hereby approved as conditionally approved by the Plan Commission.
So we disregard the Public Works' look at it?
Correct.
I'm confused as to why we need to do that?
Well, because we amended, the Public Works Committee amended, we made our approval of this conditional on this dark store loophole.
Got it, got it, got it, okay.
It is not.
Which is not legal.
Right.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, we'll go on to the final item, 2D. Uh, consideration of Resolution 11-11-2311, A Resolution to Dissolve City of Monona Tax Incremental District Number 2 Put Forth by the Finance Director.
Yes, if we actually could take this out of order, if we could prove it tonight. This is a resolution that's required to close, uh, TIF 2. It's just a standard, um, resolution that's required. So we'll send it into a state and then we'll do the final audit. I think within 60 days, we'll have to close and do all the final audits and we'll, at that point, we'll send the check to the, back to the city and to the school district and to the other districts at the same time.
Move to take this. I'll second what you.
All right.
I'll be the second, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, this is kind of a anticlimactic closeness TIF after everything that went on for 27 years or whatever, so.
Single tier, we have to vote.
Yes, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, we are going into closed session. Joan, Bill said that he will take them. We can't adjourn from the closed session, but he will take the minutes for the remainder.
Okay, so reports are not?
So we will go into closed session and.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, am I, I'm leaving?
Yes.
Got it.
That's okay.
Don't smile too big.
Okay, so, uh, next item, convening closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Friend 1, Friend C. Considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is related to the discussion, a discussion of city administrator candidates and terms of the employment agreement. Could you please call the roll?
Move to go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm, motion to convene in closed session.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Core?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Spade?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session.